Alright, so it's four thirty, we're gonna go ahead and start the policy committee. Um, let's see, where were we? So we were on...
I feel like we needed, like, like to the prohibited animals, so we get through the dissection first?
Yeah, because we talked about dissection and experiments, so I wonder if we're on...
Okay, alright, so we're on prohibited.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. I'm glad somebody was thinking something, because I can't. Oh, did we, okay, so she's still working on this question, okay, perfect. Alright, so we'll go ahead and put up the draft we're working on. So, regardless of the desired educational purpose, the following live animals are prohibited in any school facility for any time or purpose. Inherently dangerous animals. Okay. Any venomous or toxin-producing animals. Aggressive or unpredictable animals. Stray animals are animals with no health or vaccine vaccination history. Mammals at high risk for having or transmitting rabies. And, any animals on the Idaho invasive species list for which proper state permitting and documentation of ownership has not been obtained prior to classroom housing. Snappy turtles. Red-eared spiders. Is that re- red-eared-ish?
It's probably red-eared.
Okay. That person, do you know?
Should we Google that?
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
It seems like it should be red.
I would think so. Metatryn. Red-eared slider. Okay, so take the A out. The turtle! Gecko.
Metatryn.
Bra. Mini blind snake. Monk.
Or keet.
And, new tree. Okay. Does anyone think there's any problem with any of the way they're...
I would say that, like, as far as inherently dangerous, is there, like, do you, is there, what do you consider...
I apologize, we didn't introduce ourselves. Go ahead.
Maria North Clerk.
Michelle Thompson.
Jacqueline, model three in the district.
I'm Lacey, I have three kids in the district and I work at Twain.
Yes.
Shannon, writer, I work at Tilly, and I have two kids in the district.
Colleen Adler, I have two kids in the district.
Mary Conrath, on staff, and also had two kids go through Lakeland.
Animal program graduate.
Okay. So as you were saying.
No, um, so, as far as inherently dangerous, I don't know what we would consider inherently dangerous.
Correct.
And then aggressive and unpredictable, I would say that animals are inherently unpredictable. I mean, like, and you just have to, like, it's an animal.
Right.
So, the language, I guess, kind of, is vague in that sense?
Okay. So what shall we do about the language? Because I, that was, when I was reading this, I'm like, it's so subjective and not specifically telling people what they can't bring.
What about any animal with a history of aggression?
History of, or known, known aggression.
Aggression or documented behavioral problems?
Hmm.
Does that, okay. But then what kind of documented?
I would say behavior.
With a history of documented aggression. Or bit.
Um, yeah.
Or history of aggression and, or, or, and, ag- unpredictable behavior.
I don't know that I would want to specify documented, only from the, from the aspect of, like, if this person, like, all the neighbors knew this dog was a biter.
Yeah.
But there was no, like, documentation.
Right.
Like, if you can make a case that it was known.
And B.
Yeah, maybe just unknown history.
Okay. So, any animal with a known history of aggression or behavioral problems?
Inherently dangerous, I...
Does that cover it, though, that we can scrap A?
I would, I would say yes.
But, the, the A is addressing, you know, uh, large animals.
Could we put some...
Yes, or, I, or...
No, because to me rats are dangerous animals, because they bite. And they scare me, so, they're dangerous! Maybe not be dangerous to other people.
I mean, like a wolf.
Or, you know, which we did at Twain when I was there, I have a feeling that would bring
I just remember I stayed in my classroom and they were so tall, like...
Yeah, they're huge, they're huge.
I was like, what is that? No kids were there, but...
And to me, that would be a dangerous animal.
Yeah!
Because, you know, it's a wolf.
Right.
But, you know, they would not necessarily say, oh, these aren't, they're not aggressive.
Right.
They're, they, we've never had a problem with them, but, um, yeah.
Is there a way to, like...
A bear cub!
Those would be cute and cuddly, they're not dangerous. The mama bear is the dangerous one.
So would you list, like, do we then kind of get in the weeds on trying to list what we would consider inherently dangerous?
On that note, could we do something about domesticated versus undomesticated? I mean, a rat can be domesticated.
True.
There are undomesticated rats.
Sure, rats, yeah.
A dog can be domesticated.
Right.
Also be feral. So, I don't know if that may be kind of...
That's, that, that...
No, there's no domesticated bears.
Right, so...
Crocodiles.
Yeah, there's no domesticated crocodiles.
Undomesticated animals, so, and that would be, that would leave out the wolf breeds and the...
And then that would also be subjective to, well, it's a dog, well, no, it's a feral dog, or it's a... And you can't pick up your mouse, you're down in the woods, school, and bring it in for show and tell, that if you have a pet mouse.
The animal is a vet.
Is that a statement about the animal's temperament based on what you see in the clinic?
I mean, I didn't realize that they're gonna be differently there.
Yeah, for sure, I'm a vet, just for full disclosure. Yeah, I mean, vets definitely will put in the record, like, here's what I witnessed, you know, things like that, or histories that were given to them, if someone comes in and says the dog fit me or whatever. Um, the things that do get tricky, though, is like, there's a lot of vets who wouldn't necessarily, like, I'm gonna write up a letter about how aggressive this dog is for you, because then they worry they're gonna get sued by whoever owns the dog, or whatever, you know? So, yes, in the chart, they would be nervous.
So if you...
But then, as, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted, like, when we were talking about, like, later on, we were talking about having, like, an animal exam or something, would, if, if, I wonder if we could get out of trying to, um, list all of these things if in our requirements later regarding vaccines or whatever, if we mentioned, like, and, um, you know, something about the vet, you know, noting, you know, temperament that would be suitable for a classroom or something, is that something that would...
Yes, although, the only tricky part would be, like, what did we change that to? Michelle, can you go back to where we were starting?
I'm sure, sure.
The known history and the non-domesticated, somebody, I'm just gonna throw this straight out, might bring an animal in that appears to be domesticated and, you know, I would say, yep, this guy looks good, and really, there's, they're not telling me something, or whatever. So I would, I still personally would keep in these bullet points.
Okay.
And then just also have the vet say, yep, this kind of covers all the bases.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, there's re-changing any inherently dangerous animals, any non-domesticated animal? Does that seem to cover what we're, I mean...
That's really what we're trying to say, is that we're not bringing in domestic, non...
So correct me if I'm wrong, but then I'm wondering about how the example we used last week was, like, the birds of prey, that would come in sometimes.
That's not, I mean, that's not... Oh, alright, sorry. But the birds of prey would be inherently dangerous.
I know.
I mean, is there?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't make exceptions for those, yeah, or if someone's bringing in a, maybe the reptile guy, or...
Yeah, yeah. So maybe cross out for any time or purpose, and then just include, except with written permission from the principal?
Yeah.
Or handled by a professional.
Handled by, by professionals.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that's...
Yeah.
Because, in that case...
Because this statement is hard to put in here anyway, because, um, you know, regardless of the desired educational purpose and the, like, for any time or purpose, because with a service animal, we are, our ties, hands are really tied about questions we can ask, we can't know if they're, you know, I mean, a kid could walk in with a pit bull and say, this is my service animal, and we're not allowed to ask any questions, and so this, that would be violating that.
Seriously? Then... Why have to be the whole thing? Shannon, I was listening to you, you said, oh, thank you, which is, you know, multitasking is becoming less and less.
You do.
What did you just say, that you're not allowed?
Just about service animals and how we're not allowed to ask questions about vaccinations, or, you know, just the, the...
Right, right, right.
Red tape that surrounds that. That wouldn't go along with that statement, so if we were to rephrase that statement...
Actually, no, on service animals, we are allowed to ask for proof of vaccination.
Oh, okay.
As a school, as a district, we should be able to, I mean, you are putting an animal in with hundreds of other students.
You can't, yeah, you can't ask why they have the service animal, but you can ask them to provide documentation for the service animal.
No, you cannot.
I'll pull it up, yeah, because I know we can't ask for that.
Documentation for it?
Correct, we can ask if the animal is...
It just happened at the...
We can ask if the animal is vaccinated, and we can ask for proof of vaccination, I believe. But we can't ask, you know, proof of...
It's legally. No, it's interesting.
Legally, that's why we cannot.
Yeah. Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, because our policy mirrors the laws of the...
Correct, correct. But, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so...
I agree, it's interesting.
If this is then opening the door, my concern, okay, so if we change the sentence to state, to begin with, the following live animals are prohibited in any school facility without a proper handler and approval from the building principal, then we're kind of opening the door to say, these little guys are definitely allowed on campus.
Which little guys?
Well, non-domesticated animals, venomous and toxins, toxin-producing animals. We're saying these can come if they've got the handler and if the building principal's said, goy-dok.
Was that actually what you were talking about?
Well, I wouldn't say proper handle, I would say professional. Without a professional handler, not necessarily proper, whose definition is proper, professional, which in the case of, um, the birds of prey.
Do they have some type of, like, certification, the birds of prey people?
They have to have some kind of certification and licensure to have those animals in their possession.
Yeah, no, for sure, that's why I look at the language of them, yeah.
Well, and we could do, keep the changes you made there on number one, and then have a number two that says, you know, back to what it said, that these ones are not, not allowed at all, and then keep with the no stray animals, or with no known history, and the whole invasive species thing, because those probably, even with handlers, we wouldn't.
But venomous and toxin, if the reptile guy comes in?
Right, that's what I was saying, so like, leave A, B, and C under one, and then have another one that says, like, these ones for sure are allowed.
I kind of thought the point of the, the phrase without a professional handler approval was, so like, without that, you can't bring these with that, you could possibly bring these. So then, I mean, you said...
I do, but I think what Jacqueline's saying is that these are the only two items that may, that would merit a professional handler, whereas an animal with a known history of aggression or behavioral problems, that could be, you know, somebody's pet dog.
Right.
And that we would, there would just be no, I mean, there wouldn't be a professional handler.
There wouldn't be a professional handler, the principals are not bonded.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
I mean, it, yeah.
Right, and stray animals.
Same with stray animals or invasive...
Right.
Species, but honestly, I mean, to just put devil's advocate with the invasive species, if there was some sort of forestry class, I took classes in high school.
Right.
They could bring in samples of something, it may not be necessarily alive, but it would be a professional forester showing you if ready or...
And I don't know if our FFA program does go into that type of dev, which they might, I don't know.
Forestry, that, I don't know, I mean, we'd have foresters come in and show us things.
High Beatles, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, high Beatles are the, again, not necessarily alive, and they're always not gonna just, like, let them go, but...
Well, but they would be allowed to come in, though, because they're...
They're being professional and trained.
Right, right.
With written permission.
So I guess what I hear you saying is that we shouldn't, we don't need to segregate, like, these particular ones out?
No, I was thinking, yeah, that that little phrase would kind of...
Cover it all.
Cover it all, and then obviously the rights princ, or the principal isn't gonna let someone with their stray dog come in, and they're, they're not a professional.
Right, right.
So there's no need to separate them, because it would be...
Really define it and say a licensed professional handler.
But is, some of them are not licensed. Yeah, like a forester is not gonna be licensed.
Licensed necessarily, but they would have...
They might have the proper permits, but they're not gonna be licensed, but, okay. No stray animal has a professional handler, so it's, it's a non-issue. I don't know, some of those little kiddos.
Uh, that's true. See, to think, God, that's very true. So, okay. So what do you think, Jacqueline, just leaving, okay? Any other comments with any of the other language? Mammals at high risk for having or transmitting, shouldn't that just be animals?
Is it mammals?
Well, mammals, I think that's what you're referring to, is the primary bats and raccoons, which...
We might be able to skip that one, because later we're gonna require that these animals have rabies vaccinations if the vet deems it appropriate, so any animal that has a high risk for having rabies, it's gonna be covered in the health and vaccination requirements.
Well, except that, even with its, you wouldn't even want, why would you bring a animal that's at high risk? Even if it's, I, I don't know that they can vaccinate a bat.
Yeah, I mean, but like, well, actually, in, in North Idaho, I don't know if any animals are at high risk of rabies, there's, it's not really, not really a high risk here.
Animals are bad.
Only mammals can get rabies, so, yeah. I would say animals, because...
Well, it's, it's being specific, because...
So you would leave mammals?
Wouldn't say fish, I would say, I would keep it as mammals, because mammals are the ones who transmit. It's not fish, it's not birds.
All we're talking about is animals, not throwing in mammals.
Yeah.
So, okay.
I'm just, I think that that is actually going to be, like, addressed when we get into the health and vaccination requirements, so that, that no animal that would have a risk for carrying rabies is going to be allowed in the school without having rabies vaccination anyway. So I don't know if the redundancy is...
I think it's sort of maybe what they were saying, like, bats and raccoons, like, if there were wildlife person coming in...
Oh, they're...
Outside of cats and dogs, specifically, I mean, it's only cats and dogs and ferrets that are listed here under the health requirements and vaccination requirements.
Yeah, that's right.
For cats, dogs, and ferrets, that's absurd. Well, let's skip down here and see what this says, and maybe it'll go up and help us revise what we've got from up here. Just, I don't know. The building principal may prohibit any animal from being present upon the school's property on a case-by-case basis. Yes. Do you remember if I crossed out the building and just made it principal, or did I stick with the building? Yep, it's building, okay.
I remember it in the beginning, but then it happened so much, I think it was just...
Building principal is appropriate. I got stuck on words last week, so we're good. Prior to bringing, okay, certain animals into the school building's current health records and/or proof of current vaccination, um, is required, I think that should just be in that. And Michelle, we were talking before we started here, that, because I think we did the therapy dogs last year, and I think we put, like, we... This was, yes. Is that from that? Well, because when we did that, that's where, because Nate was here last week, and he's like, didn't we already do this? And I'm like, no. What happened was, we did the therapy one and discovered we didn't have one for animals in the school grounds. So, but we never got back to it because of everything else that is, you know, everything has to be done, so... But we did copy and paste, because we were kind of looking at them to see, so that came from the therapy dog. Because I thought we took out, like, parainfluenza, maybe lepto, and all, like, I thought we pared the vaccines down. I could be wrong, that was a long time ago.
I just found the policy, I was just searching for it, because I wanted to...
The therapy dog policy? Oh, good!
Yeah.
What's its number? Is this it?
It's two...
Five eight five?
Two three seven five.
Two three seven five?
Yeah.
Well, I think.
It says community relations and then service animals in schools.
Oh, that's service animals, okay.
Oh, is that not what we're talking about?
I was looking at therapy, but what does the service say?
Um, it said, do you want me to read the whole thing?
Sure.
Okay. The Board of Trustees acknowledged its responsibility to permit school, students, and/or adults with disabilities as required by the ADA, um, to be accompanied by a service animal on district premises or at any district-sponsored activity. Any use of a service animal shall be subject to the following. One, when it is not readily apparent what service the animal provides, the principal or designated may inquire... I wonder if this is old?
It is old.
Okay.
Yeah, because it doesn't, no, it's, yeah, that's wrong.
This one was revised in 2021, so this isn't the one from last year. But I can't...
You said it's twenty-three what?
Seven five.
But that's still up on our district website of that being the current policy?
Unless there's another one somewhere. Oh, okay, two five eight five is use of therapy dogs in the district. School therapy dog package, or therapy dog plan? No, does that not go in there?
Okay, so that's right, um, we could probably revamp this one real quick. Maybe not, um, so, uh, may inquire whether this service animal is required for the individual. I don't think we're allowed to ask that, but we are allowed to ask what work or task the animal is going to do. And nudging is qualifies. So, um...
I'm just wondering what Ryan was reading to me in his office when we had our situation, because, I mean, it was like, you couldn't ask about it, you couldn't look at it, you couldn't, was it the law? Like, you can't look at it.
You're not supposed to.
Really?
Yeah.
You're supposed to just acknowledge that you're not a bit, animals are not acknowledged, so he's like, oh, stop. Don't look at the dog. Look at the dog.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I do know we need to revise this one.
Truly trained animal, you're not supposed to be, just simply because it's there for that person, but, um, on so many situations, that's not the case. They're not trained.
Yeah.
They're just there.
Whatever Ryan was reading to me, it was like, we couldn't ask if they were licensed, like, if, if this dog had gone through any type of training, like, no question.
That's correct, I mean, it does say...
Well, that's just it, that...
That we can't ask for them to demonstrate their ability to perform the task, and we cannot require, well, it says may not, which means subjective, which is, shall not, require certification, training, licensure, but we can ask for vaccination of the service animal. We can ask if the animal's been vaccinated, because that needs to have occurred.
I know.
Yeah, you can't just...
But, yeah, this policy needs to be revised. But I do know that we cannot ask for proof that, that the service animal's actually been trained, because service animals go through a rigor, and it's not a quick process.
True service animals, yeah.
True service animals, correct. But, uh, when you, with the hands being tied that you can't ask for proof, you're subject to people claiming their animals are service animals.
I know. Because that has, like, a...
Yeah, exactly. Everyone's got...
Well, and, and there's a difference between a service animal and a therapy animal, and I think a lot of people are just saying, well, my therapy animal is my service animal, or not. It's just, it keeps me company.
Yeah.
It's not the same as, I need him to nudge me when he senses that I'm low on insulin or whatever it might be.
Is when you have recognizable disabilities such as blind, or deaf, or even epilepsy. I mean, people with epilepsy have no problem saying, I'm epileptic, I need this dog, or I'm diabetic, and they are, they keep me on task. But a lot of times, um, people with other, uh, not quite so recognizable disabilities, that, you know, the whole emotional support animal industry, which I'm not opposed to at all, I think that's pretty phenomenal, but they don't serve the same purpose as a service animal. That animal is, is an extension of their ability to live and be able to, you know, do the tasks they need to do when they need to do them. So, um, but, through research and whatnot, I mean, the task can be something as simple as nudging. So, that, that's, I mean, yeah, we, but, no, we're not allowed to ask for any verification that they are a legitimate service dog, that they've been through the rigor of training. We are allowed to inquire about, are they vaccinated, and can you provide proof? Yeah.
What is the removal of a service animal?
What's that?
What is the removal of a service animal?
If the animal's out of control, yeah, because...
Say that most service animals are gonna prove pretty quickly whether or not they're a service animal.
Yeah, if they're disruptive in class, if they bark a lot, or bark at all, actually, um, if they become a distraction in the hallways where everyone's petting and the handler doesn't control that, then that's cause for removal from school grounds.
Or the dog is looking for it, I mean, if they're truly not, if they're truly not trained, that, that, a dog or...
That hurt would take care of them on actual service animals pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Because I'd bring my dog in, but three seconds in, he'd be in someone's lap.
Well, yeah. I think I figured it out, so I think two five eight five is the one we did last year. Yes. And it, the dog stuff, I think, does line up with what we have in today's policy. Okay. So it's just the four vaccines for the dog. It looks like we included lepto, which is not core, but comes in to vaccinate for, and that's the one that can be transmitted to people, so I think that that's why we left it in there. Okay, okay. And then there wasn't cats in this one, obviously, because it was therapy dogs. Right, right. So that's new in here, and I think that needs some tweaking. So this one, where's the...
So when, when we're referring to therapy animals, or it's just animals in general, are we talking specifically dogs?
This was a therapy dog.
The, I think the therapy one was specific to therapy dogs. The therapy dog is specific to therapy dogs, and what it was for, for training therapy dogs.
Right, so if someone comes and says, this is my therapy gerbil, how do we handle that?
Well, that's not allowed, a true service animal...
Okay, well, I know, I know, I know, I'm just saying that there are a lot of people in the general public who will say...
Do you know, I mean, service animals can be one of two animals, and that's it.
Okay, that's, I think, that needs to be, is that defined in here?
In the service animal?
Okay.
Okay.
I hadn't seen it.
As a service animal, it's defined to mean any dog that has been individually trained to work with it.
Okay, okay.
What's the other animal that's allowed?
Miniature horse.
Miniature horse, stop it. Serious, serious. Yeah. So we're waiting for that one?
They're like the size of a dog, though, they're like...
Oh, it says, it says, note that other species of animals, whether wild or domestic, trained or untrained, are not service animals for the purpose of the regulatory definition. Miniature horses, although not included in the definition of service animals, are protected under ADA.
Yes, I'm doing it. I don't know what I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have something that I can't serve. My husband can't stop me, he can't even ask, he can't even ask, I have it! I don't know about that.
How about you?
Whose side would you want?
My kids just watched a movie on that, about like, the girl that like, started this whole thing, I think she was blind or something, and she got this miniature horse, and they're like, really...
I don't wear my glasses, I can't see.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna get a horse. Seems like the mushiest year, Selena. On the back of my little SUV, like, come on, Polly.
You can have name the horse.
Yeah, of course I have.
Love it, so yes, um, alright, so we'll go back to this policy we were working on.
It's great, it's great.
You shouldn't have told us the other animal.
You could have lied, you could have like, is this one guy?
A red ear turtle is the only other thing you can have, and you can't have that in Idaho, but nope, you told me I could get a horse.
There we go.
Okay, we're back.
So, cats, a health certificate from a licensed veterinarian showing proof of current vaccination. Regarding feline distemper, upper respiratory vaccine, feline, something. Uh, the district may also require proof of a negative fecal exam or successful treatment of intestinal parasite within the last six months. So, are there any other guests?
Okay, can we like back up before we get into the specifics about the animals, just at, at number one? I think that because there might be other animals not listed in these bullets, you know, the ABCs, so. I'm wondering if we need to add in number one that all animals. Need, you know, prior to the school year, they need an annual. Um, certificate of good health or whatever, whatever that language looks like from a licensed veterinarian every year. They need an annual exams, they need a good health.
Okay.
And then you can get into the specifics per animal, but like this doesn't talk about the rats or the guinea pigs or anything else, you know, so I think we need like.
Okay, I just, I'm curious.
Yeah.
Uh, veterinarian person, do you do annual exams on like, um. Geckos and bearded dragons and stuff like that?
You can, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that can be done, because I know those are in, well, there was one in the school, so.
I would just be afraid like if we weren't requiring any vet visits and we've had these rats in the classroom for six years, and then all of a sudden like, oh man, this. This thing has.
We have an outbreak.
Yeah, or whatever the, I mean, whatever the animal, but if we don't have some type of, of checks and balances on, on monitoring the health of those critters.
Okay.
We might be setting ourselves up for issues.
Well, then maybe just in number one, we can put something about like including. You know, whatever care is re-part of the species and then we don't have to have.
Right, like whatever the vet says that that exam is, is standard of care for this animal, whether it's deworming every six months or, or rabies vaccine or whatever, but. Any animal, they would have to follow these, the standard, what, what would be the language of that?
Standards of care for a species.
Yeah, the, the only tricky thing about that from like a district protecting itself perspective might be. The veterinarian may have looser requirements than the school might desire, like there's a whole range of vets, you know, some who are like hardcore. Vaccines for everything and some who are like, no, you probably don't need that rabies vaccine, you know.
Okay.
So, from the school's perspective, it probably would be better for them to say, here are the things that could be transmitted to students or staff. That would kinda make sure we're coming into the school, you know, so no matter who.
So, the minimums of these species have to be met in addition to if the vet says, so.
Right, if the vet said something else had happened, then that would have to happen before they got the all clear from the vet. Quick question, just cause I probably missed when we said this, is this like pets that are kept in class, or is this if Johnny wants to bring in his cat to show up?
It's for both.
Anything.
Yeah. Anything that's not a service animal.
Jeez. That's how their conversation works. Can you opt out, I mean, we can opt our kids out of vaccines, can we say, we don't vaccinate our pet? But your kid can come in.
Okay, but we have to educate the kids, we don't have to educate the pets.
I'm glad she said it, cause last week I said it, and I was like, ah, I'm so much stronger.
No, I'm just, I'm crazy, I mean, I don't know, I don't give my cat vaccines, I don't really vaccinate a cat. It just seems like a lot to bring a cat in for five minutes to show somebody.
For show and tell?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I know we definitely have not checked before.
Well, and, you know, a policy is only as good as those that are willing to enforce it, so.
It's just the rare case, your cat does have rabies, it likes them, and it colors.
Yeah, I mean, if, the way I look at it too, is if a student, first grader brings in their pet cat. For show and tell, and the cat freaks out because they're in a strange environment. And jumps down and runs and some other child tries to grab it and gets scratched by it, and then develops, you know, either an infection. Cat scratch fever, I don't know, but, um, that's trying to prevent that from occurring, this policy.
I just to also throw worst case scenarios out, like there, there were times at the vet clinic where like a pet with an unknown vaccine history, no history of. Rabies vaccination would bite a person, either another client there or a staff member, and then. Like, all hell breaks loose if that happens basically, cause like then the vets have to report it to the state, and then the pet has to be quarantined and. The person who's out there has to go get checked out, and then there's talk about, are we doing rabies, you know, protection injections?
It's like nine shots for the person.
Yeah, so it's, it's a very big deal.
Yeah.
If a non-rabies vaccinated pet did bite someone, so. That might be part of the concern.
Rabies is like the big obvious one, it's in everyone's mind, but they don't necessarily think about contracting some of those other things from animals.
Right.
Worms or lepto, yeah. Okay, so this statement, um. All animals are required to have an annual well check examination from a licensed veterinarian. Documentation of the examination and certification of a healthy animal is required.
And submitted to the school principal, is that what we were sending all the other documentation before? It was all having to go in their file?
We might wanna think about the word certification, just because that makes you think that it requires a health certificate. Which is expensive and like that's what would be used like if you were flying with your pet, right?
Um, well, I'm just thinking, I mean, there should be, I mean, okay, what would we wanna call it?
I don't know. Um, cause like, if it were me as a vet, like I, I would write a letter typically just saying like, I examined Fluffy and. Here's his, you know, vaccine history and he appeared to be healthy at the time of the visit, something like that. Which I think for our purposes would be sufficient, I don't think we'd have to require a health certificate.
Okay, so documentation of an examination and verification of a healthy animal status shall be presented to the building principal?
Yeah, something like that.
Does that, does that sound?
A current, a current healthy status?
Um, do we need, does that, okay. My licensed veterinarian documentation of examination and verification of healthy animal status, is that. Still implied under the previous sentence that that healthy vet animal status is coming from the veterinarian? Like, I would, I would assume that verification of healthy animal status, I'm like, yeah, the cat, that's healthy, you know?
Signed, leasing.
Yeah.
Okay. Documentation of the examination and verification of a healthy animal status from the veterinarian shall be, um, presented to the, or provided, I guess. To the building principal?
Yeah. And then, and then just any additional, um, recommendations for. Um, treatment not outlined below, or like, how, how we wanna word that, just like any, if the. Any veterinarian recommended treatments not outlined below will also have to be fulfilled. Or, you know, like if, if the vet says that, you know. This dog should be dewormed every three months instead, or whatever, like that, that has to be fulfilled, you have to follow, anything in addition to these. Requirements that the vet thinks are necessary based on the, the animal that you had.
Or do you think that would be covered, if, cause if the pet required other things, I'm just thinking if I were the vet, if the pet required other things, I probably wouldn't. Give them a document that said he was healthy if they hadn't done those other things.
But like, so, but I'm just thinking, if you're saying as the vet, okay, I come in in August, school starts in September, and you say. You know, this animal's healthy, but you really should be deworming every six months. What's, what in our language is saying that you actually have to follow through on that to maintain that animal in your classroom? Does that make sense? Like, because if we're just saying that you just have to have that certificate of wellness, then six months later, your dog's got worms, cause you didn't follow through.
Right.
So, how do we, how do we word that of like, you also have to fulfill whatever maintenance?
Yeah, you could just say back on that upper, if you scroll a little, Michelle, you could say, um. Documentation of the animal. Um, all animals are required to have a license veterinarian, oh, yeah, how can you stick that in there?
In the event the licensed veterinarian recommends. Any additional treatments not outlined below, those must be fulfilled. As recommended in order for the. Animal to be allowed in the store, whatever. As recommended in order for the. Animal to be allowed in the store, or whatever. Any additional care not outlined below in number two.
I wonder about the word recommends, because. Um, I mean, like you're saying, that could be a range, someone might recommend things that.
Likely ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah, versus, you know, that could get a little ridiculous.
Yeah, that's true, like the five hundred dollar pre-tooth cleaning screening, yeah.
To me. Some, some of it, we're gonna have to go on trust that people.
Right.
You know, if they're taking the animal in, that seems reasonable, but we won't, how would we know if they followed up from the. Like if they're supposed to give it a dewormer every six months, we wouldn't know that. Yeah.
But you're right, but does that cover our rear ends as a district if we're saying, like. We require they had to do it, and then if, if they don't, then that, then, I don't know.
Yeah. Required follow-up care will be.
Expect.
Followed up on. Yeah, safety care, so it's not just any kind of.
What was that?
Uh-huh, did you put blue in your hair?
Blue?
Yeah.
That's my old lady coming out.
Oh, okay, well, that's great.
We're just trying to figure out like how we, how we have language that requires them to maintain anything that would impact. The, the health risks to students or staff in the school, but not saying like, you have to do every recommended procedure that that's.
Maybe just like, you know, required follow-up care will be performed by the owner.
Or maybe that's the limits we want in there, just anything, any, any recommendations.
That would impact.
Would impact, impact the health risk to.
Students.
To the school environment must be, in, you know, anything that's in addition to.
Oh, gosh, that link, that's so hard to figure out.
How you don't like. Have to end up listing a, a whole textbook.
Well, there's always those, what ifs, so that's why you're trying to say, okay, what if this, what if that?
Any recommendations?
I wanna know how we're gonna mitigate all the allergies. What we're gonna do for staff and kids, I mean, some kids have allergies so bad that like EpiPins are required, you know?
Well, and that's, you know, within, all the parents have to be notified. You know, staff, and staff knows.
Kind of, kind of cover our bases on that one, um, when we were talking about it last week. Yeah, there's gotta be a lot of like signed permission slips and stuff.
Yeah, or I mean, like, what are we gonna do with kids that, I mean, more than sign permission slips, they're not gonna be able to be in the building. My daughter was one of those kids.
Couldn't be in the building at all.
Yeah, no.
I think the staff is definitely on that anyway, it's like, no, it's bad enough, you know, the kids are, kids are coming with. Dandruff on their clothing and whatnot, but you can't control that, but.
Right.
We know, we know this student has, you know, severe allergy, which is not coming into school. We safeguard them very closely.
So, what were we saying? Cause I was, I was on, on a, okay, on a. In the event, uh, mode, but then one of you said something about any recommendations. And, and I got distracted.
No, you're fine.
Any, um, recommendations made for the care of the animals?
I think we had something about if it would affect the health of the students.
That affect, that affect the health of, of students and staff.
Yeah, tooth cleaning isn't kind of.
Yeah, like we don't care that it's got a.
Need to be maintained on a regular basis or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, any recommendations for care that.
Would impact the health of therapy students.
Or not staff, yeah.
Yeah, learning environment, staff, students, people. Just basically.
For the, any recommendations for care that impacts the learning environment and or health of.
Staff and students.
Staff and students must be maintained.
By the owner.
By the, by the owner, yeah.
By the animals owner.
Or must be followed.
Must be, yeah.
Maintain must be, must be followed.
Yeah, yeah, recommendations followed rather than.
Yeah.
Must be followed.
I think so. It doesn't like require the vet to do anything.
Do that thing, you know?
Um, do you, you might wanna just say any recommendations for care, or any recommendations by the veterinarian for care?
Yeah. Veterinarian recommendations.
So, any recommendations by the veterinarian for care that impacts the learning environment and or health of staff. And students must be followed by the owner.
Okay.
So, prior to bringing certain animals into the building, current health records and proof of current vaccination is required as follows.
Um, my question is certain, why not just animals? And, or prior to bringing any animals into the school building, rather than certain?
Maybe we should say the following, cause what this is specific to is cats, dogs, ferrets and birds.
Okay, to bring the following animals.
Prior to bringing.
I think it's parrots and like birds. Oh, it says. You're right.
Oh, does it say that?
Parrots, parakeets, duckies and cockatiels.
Is it cockatiel double E? Spelling of cockatiel is double E rather than A.
No idea.
What?
Okay, so for pets, we have a health certificate from a licensed veterinarian showing proof of current vaccination against various. Uh, thingies, and then, um, the district also may also request proof of a negative fecal exam. Or successful treatment of intestinal parasite within the last six months. Dogs, a health certificate from a licensed veterinarian showing proof of current vaccinations against several of these. The district may also request proof of a nega- negative fecal exam or successful treatment for intestinal parasites within the last six months. Ferrets.
Um, yes, so would ringworm and all that be covered under there too?
No.
Okay, ringworm's highly contagious.
Well, it would be covered, it would be identified during the exam for the.
The fecal exam?
Yeah, health approval by the vet, they would note.
So, there, is there a vaccination for ringworm?
No.
Okay, um, but that would come out for, in a fecal exam, so that, no.
It would be, it would be a visual physical exam.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
They show them?
Yeah, they usually have lesions on their skin, so you would see it on the physical exam, and then the vet would say, we need to test this, and they'd find the ringworm.
Oh, interesting.
And so then it would have to be treated before the vet would say, yes, this can go around kids.
Okay, okay.
And then I have one other question, sorry, I know. And then I have one other question, sorry, I know I wasn't here last week. So, my other concern with this is muzzles on both cats and dogs. Um, and the reason I say that is because cats with the bacteria in their mouth causes cellulitis, which can cause a child to have to have their hand amputated, because it's usually a child's hand that gets bit. Um, they're, it's very dangerous. They carry that bacteria in their mouth to break down the meat they eat. Um, so therefore it breaks down human fleshes easily, um, and then dogs, obviously. Because even if the dog is a well-behaved dog, little kids startle animals all the time.
Right. So, this section is health and vaccination requirements, we, which is towards the back. So, if you want to peruse, um, cause this is basically for, uh, animals in the classroom and for those that wanna bring their animal in for like, show and tell.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it may be under visiting animals at school, which is on one, two, three, four. Um, we may want to put a caveat in there. It's page four.
Of the same.
Of the same dog.
Twenty-five eighty?
Yeah.
Okay. With a lovely page number.
Yeah. Okay, all right, sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 you're good.
Okay, so, ferrets require a health certificate from a licensed veterinarian showing proof of current vaccination against rabies. The district may also request proof of a negative fecal exam or successful treatment of intestinal parasite within the last six months. And how do you pronounce that word?
Citizen?
Citizen birds? Parrots, parakeets, budgies and cockatiels. Health certificate from a licensed veterinarian showing proof of treatment or a negative success result for, um, okay. All right, so.
Citicosis? Cit- citocosis? Citicosis?
Where is it?
Citicosis?
Cit- citicosis.
Citicosis. Just citicosis. Just cut the P, gotta say, call out the P. The superintendent shall take, shall make the final decision as to whether or not any animal may be present upon school property.
So, every other time it's saying that it's put on the principal to decide that, so when does it come to the superintendent?
I don't know. Also, so, these are the only requirements for these animals, so I can bring in my chickens with no issues.
I think that falls under that annual exam that we added on number one.
For all animals.
For all animals, and then this just outlines specifically.
Well, are they domesticated chickens? Oh, yeah, they're in the backyard. They let me sit them up, they hold them, or the chicks.
That's true, cause we do.
Rabbits?
There are chicks, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, would that be something that
I mean, at this point, no one's bringing in an animal.
If we just had birds.
Cause we're all the stuff done.
Citizen birds, eh, I mean, any birds would need an exam of, that would be similar or not?
Uh, yeah.
Let me look at this.
Cause I think, you know, the, there are certain avian things that we don't want.
Yeah, I mean, but.
And I, to bring that up, I was thinking that as well, so, whoa, yeah.
Or a lizard, or a.
Anything but a dog character, I have a rabbit, can I think of any?
Yeah, there definitely would be animals that wouldn't be specifically covered with specific requirements. It seems like the red part that we wrote in would cover that, like, if they had to get an exam by the vet and the vet said, your bird needs X, Y, Z before I would sign off for him to be around kids.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, cause one says all animals are required, um, which, I totally get what you're saying. I mean, like, yeah, like, no one's bringing in an animal at this point, I mean, if this is all criminal, you have to go through. I don't see this being a real issue. Yeah.
So, that, so the red, so the first paragraph covers everything but what's specifically listed in two?
No, it covers everything, but then specifically two cats, dogs, ferrets.
Those are, those are obvious known ones that.
Right.
Whereas the others would be
Right.
Not as, okay.
It would cover the chickens and the bunnies and all of that, however, what are you?
Um, I don't think it's too prohibitive. Most people with animals would have, I mean, annual exam or, um, I know some people that go way overboard with their animals, they're like, we're humans. But I think it's still feasible.
Okay.
Most all of it is just typical examination stuff they look for anyways.
Um, the language of number two needs to be worked a little.
Okay.
Um. It, it doesn't say it clearly, um, if we said that, the, eh, the following animals prior to coming into the building, cause that was left out, the coming into a building. Must have current health records and proof of current vaccinations. I would start with the following animals rather than prior to, but that's.
Yeah, the following.
The following animals, comma, prior to coming into the building must have current health records and proof of current vaccinations.
If we even need this part.
As required. What's that?
I just wonder if we even need anything from two down. Like, two, A, B, C, or D, because it's so specific to those four types of animals, but we've covered that they will have a well check and that the, you know, whatever state things will be followed up on by the owner. I just, I, it feels like we're giving in the weeds too much with specifically going into the details of those four types.
The only thing that I.
Those are. I was, those are the four most common and ones that have very specific vaccinations that we wanna make sure they have.
That are highly transmittable.
That could be transmitted, which, like, you were saying, there might be another, well, you know, maybe not that one, um, thing.
I had a few that's in my family and like, because rabies is not super prevalent here, like, one of them would have said, like, you know, like, you can give your cat a rabies vaccine. And so, if they weren't recog- recommending a rabies vaccine, it's not super common or whatever.
Yeah.
Then that might put us in a pickle of the district that that one vet said, you know, on their, on their annuals, they weren't recommending rabies.
I just wonder if we could say, like, including vaccinations for just, you know, like, any harmful whatever, so then it's just covered in, I don't know, it's weird to me to do it for these four.
Just specifying.
I had all kinds of creatures come in.
When I taught first grade.
So, they, they wouldn't necessarily fall upon under this.
Dogs, I mean, obviously we have puppies and stuff like that, but.
I, I think it's.
Which is, there's a lot more variety in pets, I think, nowadays, than there used to be as well.
There are horses.
Not a pet.
As long as it's your service animal, I mean, you do it.
Wouldn't be a pet, it's not a pet.
It's not my pet, it's my.
Not a pet.
Yeah.
This is my service equine.
Just for today, which happens to be show and tell.
Kwee-kidink.
Um, Michelle, on the cats one, I think we need to clean it up a little bit.
Okay. Let's just, so if we change the second sense to say the following animals have additional requirements, that must be met prior to being allowed on school grounds. What we're talking about is the specificity of the vaccinations. So, I mean, I think that we should reword these so that, you know, for the cats, we're looking for this, for the dogs, we're looking for that. Now, the ferret is just rabies, apparently, and then the bird is just, you know, one bird thingy. So, I don't think we should take them out, but I do think we should make them specific to the few thingies.
And, and we'd use specific instead of additional.
Okay.
Have specific requirements that must be.
But they are, yeah.
Additional, cause then we'll have to restate, state one down below if we don't say additional, won't we?
Okay.
Because bottom line is all animals have to have the well check exam, but we don't want to deviate from that, we're letting them know, in addition to that well check exam, they also need to have this. Um, okay.
And this, Michelle, last week, I think you, you mentioned, just to clarify, this, this list came from our legal something that this was.
No, this came from Idaho School Board Association, cause we've never had this policy.
Okay, okay.
Which a bunch of lawyers wrote it.
But this was the school board association, yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that we used to be a affiliate.
So, we're, we're just going through and kind of editing what the school board association recommends our policy would be.
Correct, and it's supposed to be governed for the health of our district, I mean, it's you know, if every parent in the whole district was like, we don't care.
Right.
All animals are allowed, well, then we could write a policy that says, all animals are allowed, you know, just, we're flying by the seat of our pants. So, that's, that's the purpose of sending it out to the parents, because sometimes we can't get a pulse on what people really want until they actually are like, what are you doing? So, um, I mean, we'll send this out after we kind of get down to, through all of it, and if it comes back where parents are like, oh, please, no, well, then we're gonna rework it. So, that's how the whole process is designed to work. Um, but yeah, they, they go off of the, the Idaho statute laws, rules, whatever, um, this doesn't have well, what they try to.
Yeah.
Yeah, try to. This one is just focusing on thirty-three, six, zero, zero, one, which is parental rights. I mean, bottom line, it says in here at the very beginning, if you're gonna bring an animal into the classroom, you have to send out a consent form, that's all, you know? But now we're, we're going deeper, saying we also have to meet all of these other requirements for animals.
And I think it's a really difficult situation to be in, whereas like, I mean, I think all of us at this table, you're like, yeah, I'm bringing the chickens, you know? But then, then are the taxpayers going to be gravely disappointed if a kid does acquire, acquire an infection from that and we have a lawsuit against the district?
Right.
So, I think it's, it's a tough position to be in.
It is, always, right, always, yeah.
Always.
But, I mean, I don't wanna prohibit the little chicks coming in, you know, watching the eggs hatch or you, animal dissection.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, I, I just think that there's value in that within the learning environment, so how do you balance it?
Yeah.
So, on that note, to her point too, if a child wanted to bring in chicks, would they have to get the chicks examined before they could come in? Do we want to write an exception in where like, a principal could say, I make an exception for the chicks to come in?
Can you speak to what the risk would be in that? Are, are there certain, are there certain risks, like, e- even just having the eggs um, in the classroom and watching them hatch or baby chicks up until X age, is, is there a certain risk other than, you know, obviously like salmonella and just your typical, like, if, but, is there any risk that, that your hand washing, which we already covered?
Right.
Is there any risk that wouldn't be covered by your basic hygiene procedures?
I mean, not with chicks, I don't think.
Okay.
I don't, like, I'm trying to think about other animals that might be, get exemptions. But see, if they're coming in from the egg status, then they're fully protected and then they pop out. So, if you're talking about someone that's hatched them on their farm at home, bringing them in, I mean, I, I wanna see the difference, but others might, so I don't know. I mean, to me, they're little chicks and never.
Does your, do, do your hygiene procedures also cover whatever, like, you know, let's say it's, I mean, two-week-old chicks, without, I mean, like, like, also up in, like, if somebody wanted to bring in two-week-old chi- chicks, is there anything that would be, like, airborne or whatever, you know, cause we talked about, like, hand washing and, and your hygiene procedures to cover anything, you know?
I mean, not really, I mean, that's why there are cases where you just, you go touch everything and then you just wash your hands, and, yeah, so.
So, maybe there could be something that would allow for.
Exemptions.
Um.
Like something eight weeks and younger? Six weeks and younger?
And maybe, I mean, cause that would be a really common thing here, would just be baby chicks. Uh, um, is there anything else that we can think of that would be like your common, like?
Actually, honestly, we've had people bring in goats.
Baby goats.
We've had people bring in baby bunnies, I mean, I would say, maybe we could do some sort of farm, yard, farm animal exemption type thing.
Yeah. That's a good idea, I mean, what do you guys think about that?
Because no one's gonna take their goat to vet, I mean, I guess they do have goat, I know they have goat, that's cause my phone number is one number off. And I've gotten lots of, yes, her number is nine, four, six, mine is nine, six, four, same, everything, I get.
Oh, no.
My pig's in labor, like, I can't help it. And I have goats.
Glove up.
Most people who own a farm are not, they're handling it themselves, they're vaccinating themselves, they're deworming themselves, so I don't know, maybe some sort of farm.
Farm animal exemption.
Exemption could go in there because.
And Idaho does have a right to farm law that we can piggyback on.
There you go. Could we get, is there like a, a list of, of typical farm animals that we could include, and these would be part of the exemption? That.
Your emu is not coming in.
That would, that any transmissible disease they have would be covered by the hand washing hygiene procedures that we already outlined, because if it's something that can be washed off your hands like, so, so what kind of animals could we include, um, farm animals under the age of X age?
A year.
And then just be specific about which ones we're allowing in that exemption, so that we can kind of have a handle on which animals don't pose a great, great risk.
So, the trouble just would be, and I, for the record, I'm for the farm animal exemption, but the trouble with listing some out would be if they're a mammal, they could technically get rabies, right, and they're probably not vaccinated for rabies. I think the risk is super low, I don't personally see a reason to not have a farm animal exemption. Um, are the parents signing off on this, it's no matter what anyway, so that, I think that would hold.
Well, no, they, that not if it's a show and tell thing, it's only if the animal's in the classroom.
Okay.
Well, maybe what's our farm animals exemption, if we could include, with parent permission, this exemption where parents opt in to have their kids.
Okay.
I don't.
That's a good idea.
We should do that anyways, just to, just for liability issues, you know, it's like, they're coming in, I mean, there's always a risk of being pecked, bitten, kicked.
Always, right, and the baby goat could headbutt somebody, toughness somebody.
So, all of this is just to, to have it in the classroom, housed in the classroom? It's not just for visiting animals?
No, it is, it's, it's for both.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
So. I think the.
So, I think definitely the, the baby chicks, I, I, I think that would be something that's common and valuable in our classroom. Baby chicks, and then, I don't know.
Rabbits, we had goats, we had. But here's the thing too, most people that bring in their baby stuff also understand the value of whatever it is that they own, they're not just handing it off to a bunch of kindergartners.
Right.
To say, have at it.
Right.
They're, I mean, they don't want to harm their valuable farm animal as well.
Right. No squishing the baby chicks.
Yeah, they're not gonna just.
Like, me, bunny, I'm never gonna go over that. Me, it's trial, I can't remember where you're always hugging a bunny with those four and kill the bunny by squeezing it to our.
Some, of that's a bad stuff.
That it can.
But. I'm sorry, come back, one to two. When we've had chicks be brought in the first ten minutes are how to safely handle a chick, it's not just like, go grab one.
Right.
Here they are, have at it, you know, it's like, you're, you gotta hold them or they will scratch you, they might peck you, but they're and you know, another kid might bite another kid, I don't know, we can't protect everybody.
Your hand, you can't go, uh.
Yeah, and the kids, if they were kind of at a risk, they would throw the bunny in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, how am I wording this? That's as far as we got.
And Old McDonald owns it, it's okay.
Like, with.
Uh, you're sure that what she wanted, then have a, um, let's see.
Yeah.
Yeah. With parent approval, the principal can have.
Can approve an exemption or. Typical, I feel like typical barnyard animals, I mean, or, would be, you know, I know they have ostrich farms, you're probably not gonna bring in anybody ostriches.
Yeah, like, so with parent approval, the principal, yeah, the primary principal.
Can authorize an exemption to the previous requirements, um.
An exemption? Oh, come on.
Or.
What, did you say?
You said, no, um.
We authorize an exemption.
An exemption.
Did I get a baby horse?
You did, you did.
Typical, typical farm, yeah, typical, typical farm animal.
Young farm animal.
Yeah, under certain age.
And then, yeah, under.
I don't know where that, like, what, I think you said eight weeks, wait, did you say?
Eightish, what, oh, there was just kind of.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, I just thought that was a good weaning, I'm trying to think.
I mean, no one wants to bring in their full head, whether you're getting a full horned goat or a full horned chicken.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of, you know, like, the age between the weaning and when they're really could be susceptible, I mean, other than certain flus and stuff, which is passed by sneezing or whatever. But I think that's a pretty good safe. Twelve weeks and younger, three, two, three months old, you know?
Yeah. I vote twelve weeks per se.
Yeah, I think it, I think that would be good, twelve weeks.
Everything's still a little at twelve weeks.
Twelve weeks, yeah, then we had about three months. Because, I mean, they're just as susceptible, right, like, they're not gonna wanna bring their farm animal to catch stuff from the people either, you know?
So with proper. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. With proper notice to parents and parent approval provided, the building principal may authorize typical farm animals under twelve weeks to be brought onto school grounds as a visiting animal without adherence to the health and vaccination requirements.
I would say twelve weeks old, but.
Do you want, do you need to say health and vaccination requirements above, listed above?
Or for other animals, or? Without proper notice to, to, or without, with proper notice to parents and parent approval provided, the building principal may parent approval should we say, um.
And maybe a reference number, reference.
Actually, what we said here, and.
In other areas, you you would require to be written parental approval.
Well, does that, um.
Let's put, she's proper instead.
Written notice to parents and um, the location of farm.
Oh.
There we go, there we go.
Thank you.
Well, trying to be consistent. Because I'm like, we talked about that earlier over here. So they need to, prior to exposing any student to a live animal in the classroom, the teacher shall provide written notification to all parents, guardians, and or custodians, so to parents. So with written notice to to parents, guardians, and or custodians, and the completion of Form twenty-five eighty-F. The building principal may authorize typical farm animals under twelve weeks old to be brought onto school grounds as a visiting animal without adherence to the health and vaccination requirements, so.
Okay, put a comma after all.
Okay. So, Rhonda, you.
Wait, I have a question, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just just to be devil's advocate on that. So if we're using the language typical farm animals, if somebody had, um, feral barn cats that had kittens, would our intention be to allow those?
Well, to me, a feral cat is not a farm animal.
Uh, but if it was, I mean, barn cats around here, you say it's a barn cat, like.
You can't milk it, it doesn't provide a service or a service.
I'm just wondering the language we're talking about.
They're present on a farm, but they're not a farm animal.
How would I could milk it? But I don't know that I would try.
Well, no, you're not gonna, it's.
But no, to me, a feral cat.
I mean, I think the principal would look at that and say, yeah.
Oh, don't.
No.
This falls into the cats.
Yeah, fair, not cats.
Yeah, okay, okay, that was just my only question, just the language of farm animals, if we were gonna have somebody just be like.
Oh, our barn would have somebody.
Yeah, just have kittens out there, so I just wanted to make sure.
Without knowing that falls under a cat.
Okay, yeah.
Do we need to have a list of definitions, farm animal means?
Well, a caca bee in a house, a caca bee in an apartment, a caca bee. Probably have a goat in a apartment. You want your mini words.
I do want my mini words, but I'm fine, it's okay.
And it's.
But no, it's it's a fair question, I mean.
Yeah.
Traditional farm animals to me is, you know, goat, sheep, llama, cow, horse, large farm.
Maybe you say large.
Fisher Price.
Heck, yes.
Isn't in the Fisher Price barn?
Yeah, there we go.
Well, the CDC has an entire plethora of information on animals soon. All the outbreaks from hatching the eggs in the classroom.
That's how I go on to chickens.
We brought the kindergarten project home. Seriously.
Oh, that's funny.
But, um, okay, you had mentioned though, muzzles, which would.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Did you, under visiting animals?
I was trying to find the other, oh, no, I did not look at it, I was trying to find the other thing, my brain got sidetracked on. So as part of an educational program, there may be instances in which an animal is brought into the school setting prior to any such animal coming into the setting. Reapproval must be obtained from the building principal no less than five school days prior to the scheduled appointment. Your written request must be submitted to the building principal, which includes the following. You know, the animal, animal's owner agrees to hold the district's employees and agents' house for any injury to the animal. I'm blanking this out. I mean, whatever. Oh, and there is a prohibited animal section.
I don't know, the agents cover students, but I don't throw students in there. Okay, so do you feel that we need to list that animals need to be muzzled?
Well, I guess that's, I guess that's up to them, I mean, I don't want them to seem too restrictive, but I'm just saying if.
I think that you put things in there that would protect us in a reasonable situation.
Correct.
I think a muzzle to me would feel.
That the animal is dangerous, you know?
Or that a non dangerous animal would then react poorly.
Right.
I was never had a muzzle, I was never bitten anybody.
Right.
I put a muzzle on him.
Yeah, there's like some.
He's gonna get squirrely.
He's gonna get squirrely, he's never had it before.
Okay, all right, so are we good with this?
Just the one, the part with the superintendent, how did you reword that?
I don't know how I did.
Okay, because I just, all of a sudden, the superintendent's thrown in there and I just was wondering when that would.
When I'm not like, you know, I think they just mean that if there is something going on where the building principal has said, no, like, this animal doesn't
Yeah.
seem safe to us.
And that they take it to the superintendent.
The superintendent ultimately makes the decision.
Okay.
I mean, just changing the wording to say like, the ultimate decision or whatever.
The superintendent may override any, any decision, like, because if it'd be say.
Building level decision.
Yeah, because if it says like, the superintendent shall make the final determination, it makes it sound like you're waiting on.
You're waiting on the superintendent.
But just that the superintendent may override any, any decision, whether or not any animal may be present upon school property or whatever. Oh, actually, that language.
Or if a, or if a parent is saying, well, wait a minute, you're allowing such and such animal, I don't want that happen, I don't think it should be even be in the building.
That language, actually, the maybe present upon school property is going to open a whole different can of worms because of people that take their dogs after school hours and and whatnot on the property, so that might have to be like maybe present upon school property during, during school hours.
It's during. School.
Okay.
Because if we leave it like that, then we've got a whole nother issue of how we keep animals off school property outside of school hours.
We lock the gates and they have to climb the six foot fences.
Yeah, throw the dog over.
Although I think sometimes they do that. Come back over if you take care of them.
Or I could say the superintendent may make the final.
May make the final, um, superintendent. In the event of a disagreement?
Well, and that's where I was thinking on how to word this, because if there is a conflict between I want the dog to go and I don't want the dog to go, well, the superintendent's gonna rule on that and make that decision.
Yeah, there's like.
In the event of.
So, yeah, I do like the ultimate, um.
Has the final authority.
To make the.
That way, that way it doesn't sound like you're waiting on the superintendent to approve or disapprove every form that comes through, but has the final authority to determine.
Yeah.
But ultimately, the reason the superintendent would step in is there's some sort of conflict or disagreement about whether or not the animal should or shouldn't be.
You just say that during the event of conflict or disagreement, the superintendent has a final determination.
Between the animal owner and the principal?
Well, between anybody, any conflict.
Yeah, that's the other thing.
Of conflict or disagreement, I don't know.
I don't know, just the principal X day before. But the animal is just gonna start to, like, that and then it, it's gonna be, I don't know, to some extent, because you can announce.
I wouldn't say has the, I would say will make.
This is the policy.
I'd say will make rather than has the. Will make rather than will go back to shall make or shall make.
And then the thing is, is, um, it's not only during school hours, but any school function, so even if it's, um.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I'm saying, any time.
Well, like, the red style guy came after school.
Yeah.
You know, it came in the evening, kind of thing.
So how would you say that?
Uh, on school property. For any school function. There you go. So during school hours, uh, shall it present on school property during school hours or for any school function?
Yeah.
Okay, any other, um. Changes, corrections, clarifications on this policy?
Um, we need to change the cat part a little bit, just, we need to delete the.
How far?
Well, we just need to clean it up.
Okay.
Well, and also, we list on cats, dogs, and ferrets that they require a health certificate, but I don't think we mean that.
Okay.
So I think that we just need to say, um, proof of current vaccination.
I know, because I, I think.
From a licensed veterinarian.
It would just matter of like, who was in it, I know ultimately, like, if there's a disagreement, we're saying that, but then all this other stuff is on the.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Um, it would just be like.
Hopefully, we've got, you know.
Um, and then we just need to delete feline chlamyosis.
But that's what it's intended to say, but it could be like, okay, whatever, and yeah. And. Yeah, so, so that's not. Yeah, just.
Okay. Um, so what was it that you were saying?
Um, so it should, we should delete feline chlamyosis.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so proof of current vaccination from a licensed veterinarian against feline distemper slash upper respiratory.
Vaccine.
See, but we don't say vaccination against the vaccine, um, so it's a disease, upper respiratory disease instead of vaccine.
The next, all the way down.
Um, right before.
Second line.
F B R C P, change vaccine right before that, yep.
To the disease.
To disease.
Oh, gotcha.
So strike and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Why eliminate the chlamyosis?
I don't even know really what they mean by that, I think they got confused.
By that, okay, okay, so it's it's not the same as, it's not a related, related to avian?
No. It's not, no, that's like a, it's like an infection, I don't even know why they would put it there, it's not a vaccine. So proof of current vaccination from a licensed veterinarian against feline distemper slash upper respiratory disease, F B R C P and rabies, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So the the chlamyosis would be something that would be brought up in the health.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's not a vaccine.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then dogs, same thing, so we don't want that health certificate thing.
Okay, just proof of those specific vaccinations.
Right.
It's a special P. So proof of current vaccination against all of those dyllos and rabies, proof of negative dyllos. Negative fecal exam or successful treatment of testicle parasite with mosses, and this may also be required. So it's over here. Proof of current vaccination against rabies. Proof of treatment, I'm not, I'm I'm not a bird vet, I don't know what proof of treatment for sydacosis, let me just real fast look up sydacosis.
Um, is cockatiel two E's, I'm pretty sure it is.
Cockatiel. T I N G L.
I E, I'm sure it's W, isn't it?
I E T.
It is I E?
Oh, okay, I stand corrected.
Do birds have a test on parasites?
Not like.
Yeah, toxic like a cat and a dog and a bird. And humans. Okay, I think that that's fine.
Here's one policy, they covered all three or four things in one, animals at school. Um, for educational purposes, service animals, and present.
For educational purposes, service animals, and presence of animals on school grounds, and they just say, uh, that they're just subject to precautions specified in the administrative regulations related to the length of visit, number of animals, health and safety, sanitation. Um, staff ensures the rules are followed, precautions are observed, um, that both the animal and the students are protected. Uh, that the animal's a full responsibility of the owner. District assumes no liability for the safety of these or any of the animals voluntarily brought to school. That's that one. And then there's service animals, is two paragraphs. And then, uh, presence of animals on school grounds just says, other than for the purposes outlined in section one and two above, no animals including pets may be brought onto school grounds by any individual at any time. Whether the school's, regardless of whether school is currently in session. That's pretty simple.
And it's very simple.
Does our admin handbook have that?
I don't know.
It looks.
Admin?
Yes.
What if you, you know, if you're not, it doesn't seem to be specifying precautions or safety, so it's.
Right. Well, it's all in the handbook. It keeps the.
Okay, so some, somewhere, it's somewhere else, it's somewhere else, okay.
Right, right, that's what it says. It says you have to follow all of these admini- specified administrative regulations related to length of visit, number of animals, health, safety, and sanitation. And the insurance to protect both the student and the animals.
No, there's nothing in that.
In the handbook? Okay. Okay. Sorry to begin with, um, going on to the form?
Mm-hmm.
Last thing about the psittacosis, do you want to put a timeline on that for the proof of treatment or negative test results, or do we not care as long as at some point they tested negative?
Yeah.
They've lived in a cage for the last ten years, we don't care.
I don't know much about birds, so I don't know.
Yeah, bird party.
Like I said, I'm not a bird vet either, but they don't just get it out of thin air, I mean, they'd have to get infected with it from another animal or something?
Is it a common, is, is it a common test? Like, if, if that was part of their, like, annual exam, is it?
It's definitely not like an annual exam kind of thing, like, I'm sure that the blood test is, you know.
Okay, so the blood test.
I've had, I've had it for.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so they've had it for five years, it was tested three years ago, it's never been around any other birds.
Right. It's been at home.
It's been in a cage its entire life.
Yeah.
Um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't contract it.
So maybe we could keep this in the, the key thing about never been around any of the birds, so if they brought in seven other birds in the last ten years. Maybe it's one of those, like, you know, where we kind of have to have a little faith, like, okay, they tested it at some point, it's, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We move on, I don't know.
Is it airborne?
Uh.
Because the, if it's not airborne, then that's kind of covered under hygiene procedures, but if you're washing it.
I'm not sure, I think it's, I think it's airborne. Um, how is it transmitted? Hey, Google. Is psittacosis airborne? Well, it gave me airborne. Let's see. Airborne infection, being in the same room with poor ventilation as an infected bird can also cause your pet bird to contract the disease, so I would assume people also. Yeah. And it is something called out by the CDC, cause it infects birds and people. This is also a way for psittacosis to spread to humans caring for infected birds airborne, so yes. Yeah. Okay, so. Um, let's see. Diagnoses and treatment. Huh, really?
What does it say?
Oh, yes, it's been detected by other methods, including metagenomic sequencing. So they test the sp- sperm.
Um.
Spit and sperm. And then naso, uh, fernecks.
I can't. Just like, I'm growing today.
Cultured.
Treatment.
Oh, they do have a rapid test, rapid detection, but how long is the treatment?
How, how could you say, like, within the timeframe the bird has been in capt- captivity, so if it, like, like you mentioned, it's been, like, how, how could you, how could you frame that in, like, it wouldn't have to be like an annual thing, but just since, since the owner has had possession of the bird?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Prior to.
So just like, hey, I got this bird six years ago, we got it tested and.
Yeah, they can attest to it, so yeah, it's all healthy.
Yeah.
Yeah, like on, on your, on your systems.
Since, since acquisition or possession.
That's what I see. The current owner. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, so it could, that way it's just, like, if it's not a common, like, annual thing, then at least check the box.
Yeah. That just doesn't sound right, proof of treatment, I mean, you're gonna test results from this disease.
Um.
Does that make sense? Proof of treatment or negative test results for ptosis having been obtained while under the current owner?
Under shit, maybe?
I think it's okay. Acquired. Sounds like he has the disease.
Sounds like she was a male bird.
Love the names, flying around.
Yeah.
Having received, what? A proof of.
Test result.
Hmm, doesn't seem quite right.
Do we even need having been received? Can we just say?
Yeah, just while under current ownership.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah, cause it's, it's like.
Did you look for proof?
Longer they're caged, the more susceptible they are.
With the current ownership?
The longer they're caged.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So proof of treatment or negative test result for ptosis with current ownership?
Uh, during. During current ownership?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it says in the eighties, seventy percent of them, um, they knew that they were, uh, indicated exposure to caged birds accounted for seventy percent of the cases. Forty-three percent of that being the largest group were owners of companion birds or bird fanciers in pet shops, where employees accounted for the additional ten percent. Because it's, once again, back to the cleanliness of the people, they, because it's spread through feces and dust and dried feces and. Okay, I have an idea. Why don't we say, a proof of treatment or negative test results for psittacosis during current ownership, comma, or as recommended by a veterinarian?
There you go.
Boom.
Oh, good. Not one of the faster moves, but. We have this.
Sound better?
I think that covers it.
Okay.
Personally.
All right, is there anything else?
You do have two periods there.
I'm good at that.
I do the flatty.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Um, anything else we need to work on with this policy? Okay.
That was a doozy.
It was. Okay, so if we go over to the student permission form. All right, so, to be used when animals are brought into the classroom or learning center, do you have a learning center, for educational purposes? Classroom. Student, great teacher, dear parent slash.
No, I have to go pick up the kiddos, so.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. Happy to do that.
See you later.
Yep, see you later. As allergies, asthma, immune problems, or other health concerns may make animal contact inappropriate for some students, district guidelines require prior parent, uh, excuse me. Custodian, permission for student contact with animals in school. On such a date, the following animals will visit my classroom for educational purposes. Cat, guinea pig, hamster, mouse, bird, dog, reptile, or amphibian, turtle, ferret, rabbit, rat, other.
Is that, so it's for educational purposes, is that barring, I mean, I don't think show and tell is really educational.
Right.
I think, I think that, in my mind, I feel like that could be lumped on your educational.
Cause, I mean, depending how you lead that show and tell.
Right. Right, 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 no, I just want to make sure that it wasn't.
I think that was, I think, did somebody bring that up last week? I, I feel like somebody, we, we talked about that, like, we could reasonably lump that under there.
Noted.
The following.
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
I was just curious, since now we've listed out hamster, guinea pig, et cetera, um, are there any, and she's gone, are there some specific things that we need to watch for rats, the rodent and, uh, group of animals? Is there a specific care other than they need to have that current?
I don't know.
Okay.
I just know that within the policy, we're saying.
We're still saying they must have current, current health?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but I am, I mean, the following animals are prohibited. Doesn't line up with what we stated.
Well, right, so the, like, number six, we would need to change, we changed that wording of aggressive and, or unpredictable. We should cha- make that language the same as it is earlier.
Right, I think, um.
We didn't have non-human primates in there, but earlier, or do we need to?
I think we should take that wording out, I think we're gonna hear all about that in certain the wording of that.
Who's, who's bringing it? Okay, it's cool.
Uh-huh, well, or just say primates. Or just don't have that in there, I don't know.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, that's it, it's, okay.
Well, we don't have wild or exotic animals on the other list, so that needs to go away.
Which, to me, primate, you know, non-human primates would fall into the exotic.
Yeah, cause in a, with certain. Commission and, and this right setting, maybe there is a.
Well, do, do we need to put wild, and maybe the inherently dangerous was where we really were thinking wild and exotic an- or exotic animals. Which, I don't know, some of those birds would be considered exotic, so.
Yeah, yeah, like, I don't, I think that we've covered a way for that to safely happen within the policy.
My, like, they wrote that on there. Do you know if they need it in this, uh, was it thirty-three, five, twelve, I think? Okay, so we have the one, two, three, four, five, six.
Taking out the two and four?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Yes, so we're taking out wild animals, we're taking out non-human primates. That's silly.
I was that too.
Okay. All right, um, so the building principal or designee.
Yeah, so I was wondering about the designee. It's the principal.
Well, I'm sure that the district's policies and procedures for the use of animals in educational programs are followed, oh, that would be, um, I should say. And teacher. Will ensure that the, will ensure the, I'm gonna go back onto my back kick. The district's policies and procedures for the use of the animals in education programs are followed. Um, I will.
I, that part, we've not specified who I is anywhere. Up at the above, it's the student and it's the grade or the teacher necessarily, but it's, um, and if, if you're saying I referring to the teacher.
I don't know, I was gonna read it and see what it said.
Should she, should he, she sign that?
I will also supervise the entire student animal conduct. Okay, so, this is. Teacher will supervise the entire student animal contact session, have a clean and disinfected area for showing the animals, not allow food or drink in the animal shown the area, and will appropriately dispose of animal waste. What did we say, um, animal waste.
There was an intentional component, because you were talking about, like, you know, the little tucky peas on you were, you know, like.
Right.
We had, there was language about it being an intentional, like.
Mm.
Sure. Yeah.
Well.
Well, I think it's what they're doing.
Properly dispose of the waste.
But then that second line, I don't know, sort of, no sort of, sort of, you're gonna allow it to, to encage or handle animal waste, so if there's an accidental pooping incident.
Kids aren't cleaning up.
Right.
But they could, yeah.
But like, you could, yeah. That's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Intentional.
I mean, they're not allowed.
Mm-hmm.
They weren't allowed it, but animals are unpredictable, poop happens.
Yeah, that, that means some of what you're saying, it's not saying that they will not under any circumstances, but that they are allowed.
Touch, I mean, it's, if they're handling an animal, there's that possibility.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we're not saying that they're not gonna be allowed to handle the animal.
Yeah, okay, makes sense, huh?
I mean, with. So, or is it gonna be the teacher, or, or are we gonna keep that as I will also?
Well, the building principal will ensure the district policies and procedures for the use of animals in education are followed. The teacher will supervise the entire.
The teacher, okay, that's, I think that would be better, yeah.
Yeah, um, but I'm just trying to make sure that the language parallels what we changed in. Um, but I'm just trying to make sure that the language parallels what we changed in here. I don't remember. Cause we talked about the area.
One inch of snow.
On Sundays?
Yeah. Don't speak it. We were just talking about this today, it's like, what? Don't tell me that.
Just ignore it.
Yeah, exactly. Do a sunshine dance or something.
Sort of food or animals stored or stored. Okay.
But it doesn't sound like a pretty scary.
And uh, clean and dissected area for showing animals. Not allow food or drink in the animal shown area. Mm-hmm. And, right? Animal. Under no circumstances are show and clean pages are handled animal waste.
The good day sex is set. And I haven't known
Correct. Um, not to intentionally touch or come into contact with
It's what they acted with before.
Hmm, animal. And creatures are
Chester.
Please keep the creature in this form to be by whatever date.
I would s- make it your child's teacher. For both there, for both of me using that line and the next. That way it's generic to every situation.
Yeah, I'll leave it there for now. Why are they doing that? They put, they did, okay. That should really go below. To be completely background reading, I do permit any student, I do permit any student
This is my step.
Exposed to the animals. District has employees and agents against any claims except
There are the teachers, they just aren't permitted.
Based on law and law to conduct arising out of any student exposure to the animals listed above. I do not permit my student identified above to be exposed to the animals listed above. I understand that the animals listed above are present. When the animals are present, the student will be excused from classroom attendance without penalty and given an alternative educational activity. Two. There was one, I found, if there's two.
It's not fun at it.
It's a hate word, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, over there, top left.
There you go, okay.
Over there is how you blow up the, you're making the whole screen bigger, so if you just want the page bigger.
Oh, okay.
Right there, so seventy-five percent.
Oh, I see it, got it, okay, thank you.
Now, is this the one for if an animal's gonna be housed in the classroom? Wh- what is this one that you're going over?
This is
Or is this the current exposure?
This is just for exposure to animals, so whether it's gonna be housed in the classroom or, um...
Okay. So how is, so this one is, there's a second page.
Right, it hadn't gotten fully
Oh, okay, cause I didn't see the second page, I was wondering for that, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, okay, only when your guardian sends this form, please certify the following.
I'm sorry.
I have full authority to sign consent permission form and release as agent of any and all other parents and our legal guardians.
Michelle, can you just go up real quick, when we were talking about the, the checklist I do, where do not permit my student to be exposed
Yeah. Yep.
In the, I do not permit my student, um, to be exposed, it says when the animals are present, my student will be excused from classroom attendance without penalty and given alternative class edu- uh, educational activity. We talked about last week, we touched on just a little bit, like if this is, you know, halfway through the school year, you know, Johnny has a severe, you know, disease come about, he's not gonna be
Mm-hmm.
relocated to another classroom, the animal, not Johnny.
Right. Right.
So is that, it, like, is that misrepresenting it, that, that the student will be excused from class in all circumstances?
No, I thought there was a second, I guess there wasn't, we have a procedure?
And would this go out if someone were to have a service animal in the classroom?
Yeah, I think its intention is any exposure to any animal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and as far as the child being, I mean, obviously getting rid of the pet, I mean, that's sort of a
That's just the problem, if two people are allergic to it in each class, what happens?
Yeah, well, like she said, the pet goes away and the
But if it's a service animal, what's happening?
No, but if it's a service animal, we can't.
Oh, the service animal, yeah.
Well, if it's a service animal, then we have to accommodate the needs of both
I don't know. Right.
Students.
Right.
So however, if there is a significant allergy issue
I think it has to be a case by case, I don't think you write that in here.
It does. No.
Because you're gonna straighten hold it.
But if there is, if there is an allergy issue and we can't accommodate the needs of the student with the allergy, then I believe there has to be a different type of accommodation for the service animal person. In the sense, like, if two people are in a classroom, then the student with the allergy then would need to go to the opposite side of the
Yeah, but that's not our, that's not
No, no, no.
Policy, though.
No, I don't
But that's some admin.
Right.
So, I mean, from a board per- from a board perspective
Right.
we wouldn't make that decision at all.
No.
And neither would the policy, that is an administrative thing.
Correct. But we do need to rework our policy, but I think they're just asking because we have stuff going on, and so, um, yeah, if, what I know, and what I've been told by legal counsel, is that if if there are two, if you've got the service animal and then that brings up other students with issues, um, we have to serve all of them.
Yeah.
So
But would this have to go out to that class? Cause you would be in contact.
No, we cannot let everyone know that there's a service animal in the
I know, that's what I wonder, is it contagious?
So they would, they would show one in, if they don't go into, like a truck?
Correct.
That's the law.
What?
That's the law.
No, we're, we're not being specific to, as to, we're just saying there's going to be a dog in the classroom, or whatever, the service, we, we're not saying it's a service animal.
I mean, I'd, I'd, I'd show it one day.
There is going to be an animal in your child's classroom.
Yeah, this is an admin discussion.
It do
But the difference is, is the district is not using the animal in the educational environment. A person needs the animal to conduct life because they have a
Right, no, I understand, but at the infringement of another person's life, that has a severe reaction to it, like that, we get
That is, that's how the law is written.
I feel like that's a lawsuit.
It like opens us up for all kinds of things.
Yeah. Law or not, this is an admin discussion.
Okay.
That's, like, whoa.
Yeah.
I was saying, like, your mom has had her daughters so allergic to cats, well, my
Right.
son was so allergic to dogs.
Right.
He showed up on the first day of school and little Johnny was in class as a dog. As the parent of my kid, I'm gonna be pissed, nobody told me that.
Right. I hear you.
It happens, absolutely.
We hear it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But, and actually, this has been something that's been in the background
What's happening about it?
For like three years, because we've had different things come up, but it has to be handled
Hang on, just a
at admin.
It does, hang on, we are at six-thirty, so we're gonna go ahead and stop recording.